For the first night, I drank coffee.
Did you?
I'm not supposed to regulate your body temperature or something. Drinking hot stuff on hot days, it kind of...
But I had a hydration class once off a Friday for them. They said to drink water.
Oh, wherever.
This was the thing that Kevin, he just has... That we needed to back up and do something.
Yeah, he just needs meeting minutes for the board meeting reflecting to you guys. Except for reviewed it and are proving him to...
Under old business, being that we dealt with it, just in...
We haven't dealt with it yet this year.
Oh, we were supposed to do it last week.
Last time, he sent it to Rochelle.
New business, number four.
Sure, that's fine. Probably be the easiest. Community corrections.
Call the meeting to order. It's Montcom County Board of Commissioners' regular meeting for Monday, June 23rd, to begin with the Pledge of Allegiance. I invite you to remain standing for the invocation, please.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. In the Republic where which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Vice Chairman Peterson. I guess I'm up to bat because we have no pastor here today, so please bow your head and follow me in prayer. Dear Heavenly Father, we come before you today. We ask that you watch over our nation as we enter into some uncertain times. We ask that you watch over us as we go through our meeting here today. We pray, Lord, that we, as a nation, can do what we do best and band together and work through these troubling times and come out better than we ever were. In your name we pray, amen.
Thank you. Roll call.
Alexander.
Here.
Johnston.
Here.
Peterson.
Yes, ma'am.
Painter.
Here.
Maher.
Here.
Carr.
Yes.
And Murray.
Here.
Everyone's here. We have a quorum. On tonight's agenda, I have one change I'd like to add. Number four under new businesses, the community corrections grant application. Everyone should have a copy of that on their desk. And that's all I've got for changes. Does anyone else have a change?
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Johnston.
I would move to approve our agenda as amended.
Or? It's been moved and supported to approve the agenda as amended. Discussion? Hearing no discussion. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carried. Everyone have a copy of the meeting minutes from the last meeting, June 9th, 2025?
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Johnston.
I would move to approve our minutes from our regular board meeting, June 9th, 2025, as presented.
Support. It's been moved and supported to approve the minutes of the last regular meeting from June 9th, 2025, as presented. Discussion? If not, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carried. Public comments?
Sarah Daley, Crystal Township resident. I watched last meeting online at home, and I was very glad I did because I probably would have had a hard time keeping my mouth shut. Because I would like to bring to you guys' attention because it seems like the Christians were really well represented in opposition. In Michigan, more than 30% of Michigan residents are nonreligious. So it really felt odd watching someone use the Holy Bible as their rulebook in a government building. And that is a personal, individual, supernatural belief structure. To me, that does not have a place in government. Having a prayer at the beginning, fine. Do I like it? No, but I stay quiet and do my thing. I just want you to know that when you are thinking of your constituents, not all of them are believers. Like even within Christianity, does anybody have a guess on how many denominations in the United States we have that call themselves Christian?
We're not guessing. This is public comment. If you want to comment...
The public comment is it's over 300. And versions of the current English-translated Bible are over 200. So if we are talking about liberty and justice for all, that does mean for all.
Thank you. Any other public comments?
Dale Hudson from Greenville. So in reference to the last meeting, seems like a popular subject. It seems that some of the commissioners are in a habit of making broad-based comments that are unlikely fact-based. Many of you have said that you never enforce the park ordinance in question, or if you did, the past rentals, like weddings, would run afoul of the ordinance. Most of you have only been around here for a short period of time. I have doubts that you did extensive research over the last 20 years to find out what has taken place in regard to the park ordinance enforcement. Have you searched the police records? I assert it's not the lack of enforcement of the ordinance as you claim. It is that you haven't needed to enforce the ordinance. It's because of your citizens' good behavior while using the park that no enforcement was necessary. Please give your citizens the credit they deserve. And finally, and perhaps most important of all, I must speak to the message that you clearly conveyed in your last meeting. As commissioners, you sit in a seat of authority and influence. Most of the people in the rental group that you spoke to were young and impressionable. I would caution you to be more thoughtful of the messages you convey. The message was clearly that if the law seems outdated or unreasonable in your own mind, then ignore it and do as you wish. One of you wholly encouraged the group to break the law and move forward. In talking with the neighbors and other people after the meeting, they got the same message also. Ignore the law and do what seems right in your own eyes. This is what they heard. This seems like a dangerous message to convey to your citizens. Every man do what is right in his own eyes. You would have gathered much more respect from your citizenry if in the beginning, when it was brought to your attention, you would have stood up and said, "We made a mistake. We need to start over and do this right." But instead, you chose a different path, a path that's getting much longer every day.
Thank you. Any other public comments? Hearing no other public comments, we have a 410 agenda item for a construction ordinance appeal. I'd entertain a motion to open a public hearing for that purpose.
Still moved.
Support. It's been moved and supported to open a public hearing for the purpose of an appeal to the construction ordinance. Discussion? Hearing no discussion. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. We are currently in a public hearing then for the purpose of discussing a appeal to the construction ordinance. Is Mark or Mark and Sarah Dilo here with us? Do you want to come up here to this? Welcome.
Thank you.
We've got your request and some drawings. There's overhead views of it. If you want to kind of explain to us in person what the ask is.
You said you had some overheads?
We've got them. We've all got pictures.
Yeah, what we're looking at with the two overhead doors is the... That will be facing the south, and our driveway comes coming right to the north, driving straight into those two doors. And that's... Our driveway is, you know, right on the line. Our line splits between Ray and Jolie's place and ours. So their driveway wise off, and so does ours, so it goes off on a little angle. So that's why we want to get this close to the property line. And by having it over closer to the property line, we'll have room to get by there to access the long side of the picture you see there. See the sliding door there on the back, bigger part? That's where we would like to store our boat and camper. And to get to there, the small door on the left-hand side of your picture there, that's where our cabin is on that end, and it's on an angle. So we need as much room as we can to be able to pull through there between the cabin and that with the trailer and to be able to get in there and get turned around. The space is pretty limited there.
It also creates a privacy barrier between the two homes and two properties.
So this view that we're looking at with the sliding door and whatever that you referenced, that's away from your home, that's on the...
That's facing the east. And then the overhead doors are facing the south, which is the way our driveway runs north and south there, Richard Drive.
Are these doors right here?
Just the one, one door there.
Be one door to the slide back and forth.
This door, it's like a barn door.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
That'll allow us to house our boat and our camper in the back part of it and then provide us, you know, garage in the front for both of our vehicles.
Going to say, because whatever this building is, all the way in the back would be in the way if those were two doors. Just because I like to be consistent, I'm going to tell you, I'm going to vote no on this, and it's nothing to do with your plan. I believe that every red-blood American that pays their taxes can do whatever they want on their own property. My opposition to this is the fact that Crystal Township needs zoning. They need their own zoning. I live in, I live on Greenville Road by Nelson Speed Shop. I shouldn't have a say in what you guys do with your property, and that's my contention to it. But I don't see any problem past that as far as, you know, you guys should be able to do what you want. I just want it out there, you know, so you're not running me through the mud after this because I voted no. It's nothing to do with your project. It's just that I, I have said this since I've been on the board. I believe that Crystal should have their own zoning. So that's, that's all I have. Other than that, I, okay, it is what it is.
The building department typically has a representative here on... One of those gentlemen's sick today, and the other one's covering the whole county in his absence. But their concern is that the one foot from the property line and the nine-foot height, and then none of it being built with fireproof, fire-resistant construction would make it tough if the neighbor someday wanted the same the same circumstances, and both buildings were a foot from the property line, then they're both two foot away and no fire, no fire-resistant construction. So would you be willing to concede any of that and change the construction material to be something that may be more fire-resistant? And that's maybe, maybe not a condition of granting that, granting your variance. I just wondered what your thoughts on it were.
Not sure about how, what's the fireproofing. It's going to be steel on the outside and steel on the inside with sprayed foam insulation, so I would think that's fire barrier in myself. I don't, just whole barn. And, uh... I like the idea of it just being the fence there along that to separate our backyards because our backyards are like all mixed, just together. And by putting this across there, they would have their privacy. We would have our privacy. And by making it closer, that gives us the room to get through there to access the back to be able to use the big, the part where we want to store our boat and camper.
Anyone else? Is your residence on the 70-some-foot side of this building? Am I looking at the picture the right way?
On the right side.
And so the overhead doors are facing that that boundary line that your residence is the closest to?
Excuse me. We're on the right-hand side. Yeah, I can't see what you're looking at. I apologize.
Can you see that from there?
Yes.
So this is your, this is your house?
That's a garage that's back there. It's an old garage that's been back there.
Yeah, we have that access to Richard or to Gary Drive to the, to the east right there on the top, them yellow lines there.
Up here.
Yep. And then I believe it's because there's two parts to our parcel that we have. There's a dotted line there, and where the, the front of the building there is on the south side, that's right where the line pretty much just goes right across right there. Just in front of that few feet, actually. So it all be on the, that building will be on the same... There's two different, it's not two different taxable parcels, but it's got two different numbers or something there. Can't remember what it was. But, uh, we just had a survey today, and he put all the corners together on it, and there was two separate sections there that he had marked out. Is there a dotted line? Can you see across there right in front of it? That's, that's kind of what I'm talking about. Now it's...
Is that your residence below the dotted line?
Yeah, on the angle there, yeah.
Okay.
So that's what we're trying to get past, is that portrait area there and drive past that to get out and be able to back into, into the new building.
And what's the other? He says cabin back there.
No, it's just a 24 by 24 garage.
Oh, I see.
It's the overhead doors facing Gary Drive. Yeah, and we have that 20-foot access over there. We just had it all surveyed. We thought we were, we thought that building, because of that picture you see, it looks like the, the yellow lines are five, six, five or six foot north of that building. That's, that's not correct. So we're going to, we're going to have to shorten our building up probably from the 40-foot on the back to probably 32, just to get away from the property line because we haven't asked for a variance for back there, and it's not real important. I think we can get our boat in there. Camper in there. But, uh, that building that was there, we assumed was built six foot from the line, and it's not. So...